Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, June 7th, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mrs. Cal Smith, Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which are or may be before City Council and profanity will not be permitted. After you are called, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. I honor my husband, who is a true servant of the city of Pittsburgh from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. The Bon Air Elementary School once was a shining example of what a city public school could be. Instead, the Pittsburgh Public School Board has chosen to squander the building. We, the property owners, taxpayers, voters, and caretakers of our neighborhood are the real stakeholders. We say take it down. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. Here's the situation. An excellent school was closed. The building has become a threat and detrimental harm. It should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. It must be torn down. Parks and trees Pittsburgh funding used to make it a green space. The residents of Bon Air care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for continued detriment? Why should we pay taxes for detriment? We do not consent to a detrimental building remaining to decay of the community we have built and maintained. Former Mayor Zepedaudo was defeated and left in disgrace. He appointed a panel that claims the Bon Air Elementary Building should remain. We, the people of Bon Air, have driven past former school buildings and heard the stories of human feces and hallways and criminal acts around these buildings. We, the people, say no to any use of the school except as a green space. The city controller is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the controller to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. Michael Lamb should have attended our meeting to explain why the waste, fraud, and abuse continue. Waste of thousands of dollars per month is occurring. Fraud was perpetrated with the claim of community support for the sale of the building. Abuse is occurring due to the threat of blood pumping and intentional affliction of distress. Why won't he advocate for we, the people, who have been harmed by this detrimental building? Who does he serve? The Pittsburgh Public School stated "WHO" guidance when it closed the schools per month. Why would a Pennsylvania school district use the private global club called the World Health Organization as the authority to shut down our tax-funded public school system? This points to further waste, fraud, and abuse. Sweden and Florida are two examples of superiority of business and educational outcomes. StopTheWHO.com. No more global governors or global PPS decisions. StopTheWHO.com.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Michael Tule. I don't see him online. Michael Tule? Alright, that exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name, neighborhood for the record.
Hello, council, and thanks for your time. My name is Rick Nor, and I'm from Brookline. Two weeks ago, I heard on the news that you have a problem with your city pools being understaffed with lifeguards. And so, I didn't know what was going on. I was interested in going down to Moore Pool, our brand-new pool that we have up there. It looks like a great pool, and I can't wait to try it. But it was closed. And when I went down there, I said, "Well, when is it supposed to open?" They said, "We don't know when it's going to open. We don't have enough lifeguards." Now, I know there's been a problem with lifeguards for, since COVID ended last year, there was a problem getting enough lifeguards. And it's been over a year now. So, what I did was I looked up, and I said, "Where can I go to a pool?" Now, I noticed Dormont Pool was open in the evenings between 4:30 and 7:30 on weekdays. Green Tree Pool was open. Oh, by the way, Dormont Pool was open on the weekends for their full schedule. But then I went out to South Park Wave Pool. And I noticed they had 20 lifeguards out there. And I asked them about it. And I know Settler's Cabin is open. I noticed that North Park is open. And what I'm here to ask you, because I called the mayor's office again today, and I inquired. I said, "When are you going to open the pools?" They said, "Well, we don't know." I'm sorry, but this is unacceptable. This is the 7th of June. You've had a year to work on the problem. Why don't we have enough lifeguards? Okay, I know last year, I believe you raised their pay or tried to entice people. I don't understand it. Why are the county pools open at full staff? And well, they might be slightly understaffed, is what I understand. They've had to shift some pool guards around. But in a city, what's going on? When are we going to open our pools? And exactly how many lifeguards do we have? How many are needed? And what is the status of the training as far as that goes? I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but I just want to make this statement because I think this is unacceptable for the city residents who pay taxes to our pools. We did have a big increase, what was it, two years ago with the city park tax? And I want to save our pools, but somebody's dropping the ball in, as far as leadership, as far as I'm concerned. So, I think the city council needs to go and ask some tough questions and see what's going on and get the ball rolling on our city pools. We should at least have them open in the evenings after Memorial Day so that the kids have a place to go. And that's all I have to say about that. And I appreciate your time, and thank you. But I'd really appreciate if you ask the people that are in charge of the pools what's going on and put a little heat under their, under the wheels and get the ball moving because the kids need the pools open. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's in Kaley, Irving, at the top of Beffer. I wanted to address this to the citizens, but also to Mr. Lavelle. I've come down, and a lot of times, you see, I'm criticizing him. I've talked about the homeless people. But I don't think that he can be faulted because about two weeks ago, I noticed all these people laying in front of the library. They were not here. I don't know whether they brought them in the bus at night, because there's a man that I've been trying to help. He's not homeless. I thought he was. He lives with his mother. He's trying to get his social security. So, I told him to talk to the state representative. So, I mean, he's down there all the time. And I said, "Where do these people? Do you know any of these people?" He said, "He don't know where they came from, and he's sitting down there all the time. Every day, he's there." So, Mr. Lavelle, some of this is not your fault, even though I thought it was. But until I seen all them people, I know you ain't went and got them and brought them here. Somebody sent them here. And then also, Mr. Coghill, I saw where you were asking for two dummies. Wasn't it two mannequins? There was like $150,000? Oh, I might have to find that. I have to find that because I was going to say, "You going to get them dummies, then put one up there at our desk in the front? And we want him to have an eye that can take a camera of pictures of who's coming in and out." And then also, I just wanted to say to you, Mr. Coghill, I went back to the building, and the actor, the one chasing me around, is outside the building, okay? I have to come past her to get into my house. Okay, anyway, I go in. But I was upset that day. And I went to the manager, and I said, "She's out there. You act like you don't know who she is." But the people are telling me that she sits in that office with her, and every time she comes in, she waves at her. So, I went, and I said, "She's out there." I said, "She was running, chasing, hollering after me." I said, "Call the police." She wouldn't do. She come out, said, "She's outside." I thought she wasn't supposed to be on the property. None of the property. If they say she's not allowed, she's number 10 on the list. My daughter sent you that email. I'm telling you, I cannot fight that well. I've never been a fighter. But I have been going to Pitt Dental School. And the last woman that jumped on me up there, I bit her. And this one, when she was talking about old people, this one that's following me around, I had said, "I don't fight that well. I've been going to Pitt Dental School. These are all my teeth, and they reinforce them. I'm going to bite you till I die." And I mean it. We, I can't protect myself. I'm an old woman. I am 76 years old. 77. I got to, when I see her, I got to look to see. And then when she comes in the building, and everybody's calling, "She's in the building. She's in the building." Come on now. You just need to consider us older people. I'm serious. I don't come down here just to be fussing. I'm afraid for my life. You understand that?
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Any further speakers? Seeing none, that moves us on to our Standing Committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill 1454.
Bill 1454, Resolution Amending Resolution 109 of 2023, which authorizes a cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories, equipment support, infrastructure, and professional services for use by City of Pittsburgh departments by increasing the total spend by $900,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $10,365,991.
Motion to hold for four weeks, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I want to have a quorum.
Bruce is on. Yeah. Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our new papers, Bill 15.
Four weeks.
Four weeks. Oh, I'm sorry. The motion was to hold for four weeks, so the bill will be held for four weeks. Sorry. New papers, Bill 1586.
Bill 1586, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Marshall, Dennehy, Warner, Coleman, and Goggan for Expert Legal Services Related to Litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $17,951.85.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1587.
Bill 1587, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Campbell Durant for Expert Legal Services Related to Litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $29,751.81.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1588.
Bill 1588, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman, Thomas, and Battle for Expert Legal Services Related to Litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1589.
Bill 1589, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Dicky McCamey and Chakot PC for Legal Services in Connection with the Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $5,478.15.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1590.
Bill 1590, Resolution Amending Resolution 731 of 2022, which authorizes a 2023 fee schedule pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code by adding a maximum cap for zoning review fees.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion.
Discussion, Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, if we could, are you here to speak to this? Come to the table.
Good morning. Jake Pollack, Deputy Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget.
Morning. Just had a couple questions. So, this is the, where amend the fee schedules? What are we amending here? I'm opening it up as we talk about it.
Sure. It's an adjustment to the fee schedule as it relates to zoning fees to establish a maximum fee of $40,000 for any zoning application. So, in the 2023 budget, we modified the fee schedule for zoning fees. We brought them into line with the actual cost of review. For many years, the city's been essentially undercharging on the whole applicants for zoning fees, and the general fund has been covering a significant portion of the cost of the zoning and development division within planning that reviews those applications. We adopted a new fee consistent with the fee study that we've been using for several years in other departments that made that, based that fee on the total cost of the project, which we have extensive research to demonstrate is a strong foundation for the amount of time it takes to review an application. But in that initial modeling, there was no maximum fee. And for some, you know, very large, very high-value projects that created very high potential fees, it's still only 3% of the total value of the project. So, you know, it scaled. But that led to some questions or concerns within the development and construction community, which we, in working through that in discussion with them, determined that a $40,000 maximum fee would be reasonable. It meets the revenue projections we need to fund the division. So, this has no negative impact on the budget or on our revenue. In reality, only about 4% of the applications we receive come in at over $1 million total value. And they vary widely from year to year, so we don't really budget on the basis of those applications because the number that come in or their total value varies widely. 96% of applications are for $1 million or less. And in fact, 70% of our applications are for less, for projects with a value of less than $50,000. Under this fee schedule, folks doing projects of that size will actually see a reduction in their cost. So, the fee schedule that we all adopted as part of the budget last year, I think, more correctly allocates the burden of paying for our zoning review activities to projects based on the amount of time they take. But this maximum fee helps address some kind of edge cases for the extremely large and extremely expensive projects.
Okay. Which folks would see a decrease?
Anyone doing a project of less than $50,000 in projected value will likely see the amount of their fee go down compared to the old schedule. They've already started seeing, that's already been happening since the beginning of the year.
Does, what was it before?
It was, the fee was not based on the total value of the project. So...
It was a flat fee?
Was, it was a series of flat fees. It was, it was just not structured in the same way that it is now. So, the net impact on those folks, folks doing a project of less than $50,000 in value will likely pay less. It depends on exactly what they're proposing to do, of course. But in general, yeah.
Then, how was the cap calculated?
We calculated the cap based on the amount that would be necessary for the instituting of the cap not to disrupt the budget and not to, a lower cap would have risked the fee schedule not raising enough in revenue to cover the costs of the ZDR team. So, this, with this cap, we know that it will not negatively impact the budget.
Okay. And then, with the last fee that was proposed, it was, you know, in discussions with Kyle and PLI and, well, mostly those two people, I was, you know, they were referencing in terms of like, you know, people want it turned around faster. So, they, that's why we had an increased fee initially. And we were going to hire people, or we were in the process of hiring people. Is that still?
Yeah.
The case? Are we still going forward with hiring individuals so that the process could happen faster?
That's correct. Nothing there has changed, even with this instituting of a cap. The revised fee schedule, even with this cap, provides the revenue necessary to expand the zoning and development review division in a way that can turn applications around more quickly and provide a higher level of service.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Strasburger?
Thank you. Well, my question was going to be, what is the budgetary impact? And what does the five-year plan look like based on this? But you answered the question that there is no, based on, I'm guessing, the budget, this is, what, 4%, you said 4% of any is going to exceed this amount and actually be, of any proposal will be subject to this cap. And so, given the fluctuations, it's not actually going to make an impact. Can you dig into that just a little bit further? Like, how do we then set the budget for recouping the, I'm assuming these fees are, to recoup the cost for the work done? How do we then set the budget based on fluctuating proposals that come through?
Yeah. I mean, it's always modeled or forecast, right? We won't, we don't know when we're drafting the budget, how many people are going to apply for a permit. So, we have to, you know, we make educated guesses about permitting volume. And we're continuing to do that. But yes, as I said, you know, on average, projects with a value of over $1 million, which is really when we start to get into the area where this cap has an impact, only constitute 4% of what we've historically seen in our applications. The real, the majority of the revenue for zoning and development review fees really comes from those projects between $50,000 and $1 million in value, which is unaffected by the cap. Because if your value is within there, then you're not reaching $40,000. And so, we feel confident based on both historic trends and the way we've modeled this, as well as what we've seen so far in development activity this year, that even with this cap in place, the level of activity that we projected will be coming in. And that as a result, the amount of revenue we expect from fees this year will meet the amount necessary to fund what council has authorized in zoning and development review.
Okay. I just say on the record, I'm fully in support of this, even if it is simply signaling that we are, in essence, ruling out the red carpet for people to invest in our city, to be able to, you know, invest in our downtown as we're going through this big transformation of downtowns, like every downtown across the country is. And so, I'm in support of anything that does signal that we are open, you know, open for business, that we want to welcome development here and responsible development, and that we are, you know, a customer service-oriented type of city. So, I'm in support of this.
And I should point out, the Councilman Wilson asked how we arrived at $40,000, and I explained that that's the number necessary to ensure that we don't move out of alignment with the budgetary projections. But that number was also arrived at in consultation with the organizations representing folks who do real estate development, construction, the Chamber of Commerce, all of whom have been supportive of this resolution to this question.
And then, my last note is, you know, I saw the press release that came out when this was announced, and I think there was some confusion that it wasn't in effect until council actually takes action. And so, there, you know, this, it cannot take effect. The fee schedule has to be approved by council. And so, I want to make sure that council is indeed, you know, part of the discussion at the table. And this is happening, you know, in concert with us, since we do have the final approval for the fee schedule.
Interesting.
I had some emails come in about this. Folks with applications in process, is this affect applications that are, I mean, once approved?
Yeah. Yeah. Once again, it would only affect...
Like, new applications?
No, I'm saying, it would only affect projects large enough that they would have more than a $40,000 fee.
Right.
To begin with. So, depending on who's emailing, that likely might not have an effect on them either way.
Right. So, just for the public, if you have a, you're putting in a parking pad in front of your house.
Yeah, you're certainly not going to reach a $40,000 fee at that point, anyway.
So, this is not going to...
There would be no impact of this change. This only impacts...
Large scale.
Projects that are large enough that it would otherwise have triggered a $40,000 fee or more. But, yeah, any, and any, I don't know that we actually had anyone run all the way through the process to the point of payment this year for a project where this is actually, would be triggered. So, there's not anything to worry about in terms of a retroactive adjustment.
Okay. Madam President?
Thank you. My first one is...
Thank you for working with us and working with council on this. I did hold it for a week and gave council the opportunity to address the issues and concerns. And you and I had some conversations. So, I do want to thank you for that. I want to make sure that people are aware that you were willing to work with us and make sure that it came through to council for a vote. So, thank you for that. For me, on my side of town, you know, my concerns have always been, I feel like there's tap-in fees for PWSA that are high, and we hide behind the PUC for the cost of the tap-in fees. And we have smaller businesses that are, that struggle. And I do want to say Councilwoman Strasburger was helpful in working with PWSA on those issues. And so were you. So, I want to thank you for that. But I do think that in my side of town, when we need development, any kind of deterrent is the last thing we need on our side. So, I talked to you about, I'm going to do some type of incentive for my side of town. And if Councilman Coghill wants to do something for us. But in the East End, they're overwhelmed with development. And our side of town, we're begging for just some stability to help stabilize our neighborhoods. We don't want to overcrowd our neighborhoods. We don't want the same issues and problems that they're having in the East End. So, I'd like to work with you on coming up with some sort, strike some sort of a balance where there is some incentives to develop in other parts of the city, Pittsburgh, that do need development and are eager for it. And we do have some great development happening in Ferrywood that was in conjunction with the community and the URA. So, I want to thank David Geiger for that. He's, he's been really great working with him. And I don't say that often about anybody at the URA, so that's pretty good. So, but I, but I do want to say that I think that we need to talk about incentives and the entire package of what it costs to develop in the city of Pittsburgh, and the reality of not developing in the city of Pittsburgh, and not incentivizing some developments. I'm not saying that somebody has to have huge developments and horrible things happening. But I think sometimes we, the community, when they come out, there may be 20, 40 people, and we listen, 24, 40 people versus 400, who may want it, who never came out. And so, I think that we've got to try to find some kind of balance with all of this, with all the development. I don't want to see no development. I want to see some. I want to incentivize ones on our side of town where we're struggling and hurting for some, some development. But I want to mostly thank you for working with us on this.
Sure. If I just could briefly, I know this doesn't completely speak to all the items you mentioned there. But as it relates to these fees, just to reiterate a point I made earlier, that I think was before you walked in. Under the fee schedule that council adopted last year, and that is, this is not being changed here, projects of the total value of $50,000 or less, which are, make up 70% of the applications we get, the vast majority of what comes in, should actually see their fees reduced by this new fee schedule by moving to a project value-based model for assessing fees. So, I think for, for most, most applications, again, that's not large-scale projects, but for most applications that come in from all of your constituents, this is actually a bit of relief in terms of the cost. And then, for projects between $50,000 and $1 million, it depends on exactly what it is that they're proposing and its value. So, there are ways in which I think this fee schedule can encourage development at that small and medium scale. I mean, and it's certainly not a barrier to development at the larger scale where the values make it possible to pay a higher fee, especially now with this agreed-to cap in place. So, I think that this overall, as it relates to the cost of permitting, is conducive and supportive of encouraging further development while also making sure that we can do the zoning reviews and building permit reviews necessary to ensure the buildings are safe and that they're not infringing on neighboring properties. Beyond that, yes, there are a lot of conversations to be had about other ways to incentivize, you know, construction activity and development across the city, in particular, I think, in the neighborhood south of the river, where it's no question that that's been slower in coming. So, happy to have those conversations.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Reverend.
Thank you. Second round, Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I just had some more detailed questions about this, the way it's laid out. Because there's no other fee, I'm looking at the fee schedule now. There's no other fee like this.
How do you mean?
Yeah. So, when you look at the fee description, it just says a minimum, a maximum, but it doesn't specify, like you said, 3%, 4%?
I'm sorry?
Is that just like an internal?
No, it's, it's, it is...
Like, I'm looking at the spreadsheet now, and it just says residential zoning fee per $1,000 of project value. I just don't see...
I think it's $3 per $1,000 in project value.
Okay, yeah. The residential on the comments says $1.
Yeah, the residential is $1, and the commercial is 3. I'm sorry. Yes, it's the commercial that's 3. And so, the only change being made here is the institution of a cap, a maximum fee of $40,000. Nothing else has changed.
And then, the next to the residential zoning fee per 1,000, there's no comments that talk about... that talk about what it is. But, it does say 1 and 3. Is that the same?
I'm not looking at the version of it that you're looking at, so I'm, I'm, I'm not entirely certain. I can tell you that there is a residential and a commercial fee. They are based on total project value, you're correct. It's, it's $1 per $1,000 in value for residential, and $3 per $1,000 in value for commercial. And we instituted the cap.
One says commercial amendment, and the other one says commercial zoning, like commercial amendment zoning review. I was just, I'm not sure if there's a, an error in the spreadsheet or.
Without seeing which spreadsheet you're looking at, I can't, can't quite speak to that, but. Oh, th- those are the, the, the ones that say amendment are to amend, that's the fee if you go to, back in to amend the permit. So, there, there are two.
Okay.
Separate fees, but, but they have the same calculation.
I got you. Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill?
Thank you. Welcome. Good to see you. First, I want to say, I'll just give you an example on a smaller scale with me as a contractor. And to what Councilwoman Strasburger said, this is kind of just builds off of that as far as customer-friendly and business-friendly. I know not all development is good development, but, you know, we certainly want to make it easy for them to build here, you know, for the projects that we support. But, there are municipalities in and around me I work in. One municipality just raised the permit fee from an average cost of $70 to $370. Now, I used to not even bother the customer with it, the $70 fee, they didn't even have to worry about it. But, now, I'm giving them a separate bill from the municipality. And it's a bad look on that municipality. I mean, they feel like they're being gouged, but it's just the truth of the matter. It's built into my cost, so I have to show it. I didn't bother before. So, so that, and then there are other municipalities that'll tag my vehicles that are out in front of the house when, you know, they know we're working there. Some, some municipalities, you know, they let us, they, they understand. And those are the communities I choose to work in, I will tell you. You know, it's just because it's easier for us. We don't want to have to worry about the exorbitant fees. We don't want to have to worry about where we park. We don't want, so, so I do believe on a bigger scale, with development in the city of Pittsburgh, if we make it hard for them, then they're less likely to build or to want to build in Pittsburgh. So, so I really think the cap was a great idea. I thought the initial fees that came out were, like, off the charts. I thought, oh, my gosh, we're going to drive people away. But, I think the most important thing is not so much the fees. I'm fine with the new structure. To me, it seems like the developers are fine, right? So, more importantly, it's, it's the process, expedient process for me. You know, when I go, have to get permits in other boroughs, I love the idea where I just come in, I write a check, and I'm out the door. It's just simple. For me, I'd like to see our departments, and, and I know Sarah Kinter does the best job she can with the resources she has, and everybody else that's involved in the fees and permitting. But, I would like to see that streamlined where it's just easier for people. And I know One Stop PG, that's, you know, you're forced to learn it really, because there is no, I don't believe we have a desk which we can come down and, yes, please.
Sure. So, there are several things I'd like to, to speak to in what you're saying. One, completely agree with you about improving the sort of customer service dimension of our work here. Given the, the size and the volume of applications, we're probably not able to provide equivalent service to, you know, some smaller municipalities that just see fewer permits to review. But, we've been instituting and continue to institute service-level agreements where we give the customer a clear expectation of the number of days that can elapse between when they submit their application and when they get their response. We've improved the way in which we document requested changes, all with an eye toward being more consistent and transparent and giving folks a sense of, you know, clarity about what they need to do. We do not presently have an in-person desk that was closed during COVID and was not reopened, has not reopened primarily because of conditions inside 200 Ross Street where that counter existed, and we're not able to occupy that building at this time. A, we have let the construction contracts for the final buildout of 412 Boulevard of the Allies for the city's floors of that building. City staff will be moving into that building in waves over the remainder of the year and into early next year. And the final phase of that construction is the buildout of a physical one-stop shop to, to mirror the online one-stop that will be on the first floor of the building. And so, once again, people will be able to come in, in person, to submit applications for permits, and in some, in some instances, get a permit same day for, for the simplest of, of applications. We are also, we have invested in this budget in increasing staffing in both PLI and planning in particular. I'm not sure if we added anybody in DOMA in this particular portion of their work, but they are the other big portion of the permit review process, to staff that counter when it comes online and to increase the speed and consistency of reviews. And we're working towards a unified system where actually all of the folks at the counter will be PLI employees doing the intake of every application type, so you won't have to go to this part of the desk for the zoning review, and then this part of the desk for the building review, and then over here to another part of the desk for the, for another form of review. There'll be one person to intake all of your information, trained to know everything you'll need to submit. And then, different personnel in different departments will review pieces of that application as needed based on what you applied for. But, all of this is designed to simplify the process. At the same time, we're also investing, and council has approved the funding for this, in improvements to the online version of One Stop to make it more customer and user-friendly.
Good, good. All welcome news. It sounds like, you know, you're headed in the right direction. I will tell you, most of the complaints I get have nothing to do with the fee structure. It has everything to do with what we're just talking about. So, I'm really glad to hear that you're, you're working in those departments to just make that an easier, faster, less complicated process.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate it. I'll be supportive.
Thank you. Any fur- any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. We now need a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the insurance departmental transfers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfers are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. First new paper is Bill 1582.
Bill 1582, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with Bloomfield Garfield, Bloomfield Development Corporation to provide a license, ownership, and maintenance agreement for jointly sponsored asphalt art on Friendship Avenue.
Is he here?
He's online. Councilman Kraus?
Motion to approve, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1583.
Bill 1583, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary construction easements on certain properties in the 19th Ward of the city in order to advance the Mount Washington Landslide Remediation Project. Costs for these temporary easements shall cost, shall not exceed $2,875.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Madam President?
I just want to thank the Director and the Mayor's Office for working on all the things that they're working on in Mount Washington, especially on Grandview with the slope remediation. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill?
You know, I just wanted to compliment you again. Grandview is beautiful. I love it up there now. There's even a lookout near the incline they put on that, to the right side of the Monongahela Incline. Yeah, right. Excellent, excellent. No, it's really great welcoming to all the tourists, which is probably 90% of the, you know, people that are up there.
I keep telling him, move to my district and run for my seat.
I love your district. I really do. It'll be a first, right?
Yeah. You'd win, you'd win.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1584.
Bill 1584, Resolution Authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to accept a donation from the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh in an amount of $200,000 for Ferrywood Park and Playground Improvements.
Motion to approve.
Second with discussion.
Discussion.
Thank you.
Madam President?
I'm getting, paying you back for last week when you had the whole agenda.
You see, you're getting a lot done this week.
So, just, well, let me just say this week, but this actually took years. And I want to thank David Geiger from the URA, and the URA, everyone with the URA, and the Mayor's Office, current mayor, previous mayor, it may go back as far as Luke, I can't remember. But, it's just, it's been a project we've been waiting for, and the community's been waiting for. And I just want to say Ferrywood's a neighborhood, if you've never seen it, it's absolutely beautiful down there. But, they, and they border Thornburg, Rosen Farms, Crafton, Ingram, so they're all around these neighborhoods, and they have a lot of industrial. People think that every time they're driving through and they see Caliente's Pizza, they think they're in Crafton or Robinson or something. But, the edge of Thornburg Bridge is actually, it's actually all still in District 2. And you cross over and it's not. So, it's in the city of Pittsburgh. So, I just want to say Ferrywood's been home to a lot of great things. They have two warehouses for Giant Eagle there, getting ready to have RIDC parked there and building for the first time. I don't even know any other place like this in the city of Pittsburgh where it's patio homes for seniors at affordable, affordability for the next 40 years. And that's what the seniors ask for. Even though our district says that we have an abundance of affordable housing, this is a project, it will be new, new affordable housing, and the community's so excited about it. But, because of all those projects happening in Ferrywood, the one thing I asked the URA was to please give something back to the community because they have, even though the development's going to bring some different things and some other stuff they're going to have with infrastructure, I wanted something that the community actually picked and worked on. They have had a poll that's been closed down there since before I was elected. And it's, it's just been sitting there. At one point, the URA, you weren't on it, was going to sell to Housing Authority, and then they were going to allow Emerald Gardens to swim there, but not allow the people from Ferrywood to swim there. I'm like, oh, hell, no, you're not. So, we stopped that. And I want to thank everyone who helped me do that, too. But, in the meantime, the residents have been sitting here, we are waiting for something. So, this is a great time for the residents. I just want to thank every, sorry that it took me so long to describe all this, but if you remember, this is the area that was flooded, and the people felt pushed out of the community, and the, the residents that were left behind felt really forgotten and neglected. So, they're going to finally get some things that they care about and that they want to see. So, thank you to the URA, thank you to the Mayor's Office, and thank you to all of you for voting for it.
Any further discussion? If not, just want the record to reflect, Madam President has now spoken halley of the URA twice today.
You don't expect it then.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Feeling okay?
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Recreation Youth and Senior Services Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. First new paper is Bill 1591.
Bill 1591, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation to enter into a sponsorship agreement or agreements with Chevrolet for the sponsorship of Pistons in the park. The city may receive up to $3,000 per year from this sponsorship.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1592.
Bill 1592, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Green Gears for Waste Management Services in conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh's Independence Day Festival at an amount not to exceed $11,300.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1593.
Bill 1593, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, a license agreement or agreements with the University of Pittsburgh Department of Physical Therapy for implementation of the On the Move program at no cost to the city. The city will receive $1,000 in revenue for each site that participates in the program.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Second.
Thank you. If the Director would like to come to the table, I mostly wanted to call her up because I think this is an innovative and really, you're welcome to stay there, or you're welcome to come and sit at the table, whatever you prefer. Yeah. Around the velvet rope.
I want to sometimes go on that side, too.
But, if you'd like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit more about this program, because I just, I think it's a neat program that we're participating in.
Sure, absolutely. Hi, everyone. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation, Catherine Vargas, from the City of Pittsburgh. Yeah, this is great. We, this allows us to work with PIT, not only on building out the health and wellness routines for older adults to attend our Health, Healthy Active Living Centers. They also get coaching from PIT physical therapists on movement specifically, and get to track that progress over a length of time. The participants also do get an incentive to participate. It's something that's come to us with our partnership with the county as an opportunity to make sure that we're both sort of working in it with the university on the expertise that they can bring to our, our seniors. And, you know, for us, it's probably one of the more substantial ways that we'll be able to support mobility specifically around making sure that older adults can stay happy and healthy in their homes longer. You know, some of the things that I think are really interesting about this is that we'll also be able to work with those folks from PIT on building out custom things that they're seeing across our centers. So, there may be different needs in different communities. And we're hoping, and we're planning on having all of our, our centers participate in this. There's a lot of interest, too. People are really excited about it.
That's great. And these kind of partnerships are exactly what we need to be able to further our bandwidth, right? We only have limited bandwidth and ability to hire, but if we can partner like this, it's great.
Absolutely, yeah.
And, I mean, just as you said, the, the biggest factor and determinant, determinant of, of health for older adults is mobility and being able to stay active. So, it's just wonderful.
Yes, and thank you for letting me talk about it a little bit more, because it is really powerful when we can bring experts into our centers to make sure that we're providing, you know, all of our, you know, participants with the best care that we can.
I have no further questions. I don't know if others do.
Thank you. Madam President?
Just real briefly, these are going to be at all the centers?
So, we're going to start with our focal points, but we're hoping to eventually be able to get it to all of our centers.
Where are the focal points? Where are the focal points? I didn't hear. Did you mention those?
Oh, sorry, I did not. Let me, I don't want to misspeak. I can also provide a list of the centers that are ready to go and the ones that we're going to be rolling on. But we have, sorry, I'm going to pull this up because I don't want to misspeak on the ones that we are starting in.
Richard, you can just, you can tell me.
If we didn't list them on here, the focal point centers are Homewood, South Side Market House, Sheridan, and Brighton Heights, Sheridan, Homewood.
So north, south, east, west, that's what I want to make sure.
Yeah, so yes, in every, every area. Thank you. I didn't want to misspeak there.
My issue has been that I want to make sure whatever we're doing, we do north, south, east, west, and.
Absolutely.
Central, similar to what the school district, you and I work with them a lot, similar to what they do. They don't ever do a program or anything without looking at every part of the city, every sector of the city. So that way, they're at least accessible to most people if we had better transportation. Anyway.
And, oh, and the other thing we do is our focal points are like the center point amongst a number of different centers, and we bring participants from other centers to their focal point. If there's an activity that they want to participate in, we do arrange for that transportation.
Oh, that's good. And then the one thing you and I are going to meet about, I want the public to know, is that they saw the list of all the feeding programs and saw absolutely not one in the West End or District Two. And so you and I are going to meet about that, and I'm hoping that we'll get something in place there. But I just want to make sure whatever you're doing or any department going forward, that they always include the southwest Pittsburgh in that equation. And not southwest as if it's one, but south and west, so that that way you're reaching people that, you know, can't always get to. Like, we have a lot of things in Banksville, and that's because there's a church in Banksville that does it all for the community. We don't have to do much up there, unfortunately. They don't rely on us at all. I mean, fortunately and unfortunately. But at the same time, we don't have people that can get to those programs. And so I really want to make sure whatever we're doing, we're doing all across, you know, the City of Pittsburgh, at least in sectors, north, south, east, west, and central. And then if you look at the map and you didn't have something in that area, you need to sit back down and re-figure it and figure out something. And if there's some way I need to help, let me know. I'm glad to help in any way I can to, to make sure we're doing those things. But I'm certain and confident we're going to get something in our side of town with or without the City of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
And I just want to also be clear that the list is not up of our partner sites. The way that our summer food program works is in partnership with community organizations where we actually sponsor all of the heavy lifting for those organizations to have food present. So we typically have anywhere between 40 to 50 organizations across the city. And we do have four currently in your district, but we are still, the reason why it's not...
I want to list those, too.
Yeah, and I did, yes, yes. And just to say, so the public can know, we are still taking applications, which is why that list isn't printed yet, because we do work with a number of organizations to get as many sites available anywhere in the city. If an organization can help us sponsor and host a location where we don't have a building, we will, we will work with them.
And so you know that there was an email that went and they copied the schedule that was out there that's now circulating all through the public and all on your site.
Yes, I did respond to that.
And everywhere.
This morning.
Oh, did you?
I did.
And then they copied the mayor or sent it directly to the mayor and asked, you know, why the West End was not represented. And it was from Matt Hoag.
Yes, I am aware. And I'll also just say that.
And now there's a Facebook page about the whole thing.
Okay, yeah, and, you know, I think that the confusion was that just that the rec centers, that we also do it at our rec centers, and our rec centers don't ever, are never taken off the list. But we do have to update it for all the partners to make sure that if the Carnegie Library was a partner last year, can they be a partner this year? So ours, our food supervisor, Carly Walker, does, Getman, does an awesome job.
Yeah, she does.
Managing a lot of our partners, but we can't publish who they are until we get their application completed.
So maybe just say that at the bottom of the things, whatever's being circulated, saying this is not, this is incomplete list, additional sites may be added or whatever, something so that it doesn't create this frenzy that's created.
Yeah, absolutely, yes. Like I said, we only have, you know, I think nine centers, you know, that we serve food from, but we work with 40 to 50 partners to get food out the door.
So I'm going to say Kristi Porter, we're having a lot of problems with some kids in Sheridan. There's been about 30 kids. I've sent videos to the administration where kids are on top of rooftops of garages doing some kind of battles, pointing guns at like 10-year-old kids in the street. And it's all videos, all photographed, everything's documented. And I've been sending that to people, but I said, I talked to Kristi Porter, and she said that they're willing to do a program there.
Awesome.
And they also need a feeding program.
Oh, absolutely. That's 100% what we can do with them.
Okay, so that's one of some of the things. I'm sorry to sidetrack this, but I just want to make sure that the public knows that we're working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who do I see next? Councilman Wilson, thank you.
Thank you, Director. This program, it pays each site $1,000?
It does.
Or the City of Pittsburgh?
Yeah.
For every site?
Yeah.
Who's paying that?
Uh, Pitt for letting us, you know, have them in our space. It'll go directly to the, back to the senior programs. We actually talked with them about that because it also gives it incentive, incentivizes the older adults who participate, so they also get something from it. And, you know, our thing was like, we don't really need that. We just want this for our people. But it does come from Pitt as a part of the, of the program in total, sort of for allowing us to, you know, have this as an official site. And they do that for any site. There's other healthy, senior programs across the city that are going to be participating.
So they're, so we're paying the seniors as well?
Yeah, there is a, they are, they have like a relationship with the seniors where there is some incentivizing of continued participation in the program for the seniors, too.
So this, I'm just not familiar with On the Move. Is it a program that's ran by someone who is licensed and then they are bringing students to the center?
Yeah, so it is, it is a program that is involving students from Pitt who are part of, you know, the everyday interaction with seniors. And then it is, they're, you know, doing a study on, does this work to help people feel like they're improving their mobility over time?
Is this a research study?
Yes.
So every participant will be signing, you know, all the correct forms of?
Absolutely. So they have to.
Has gone through the?
Want to participate. So nobody participates if they don't want to, and then they have a direct relationship with Pitt around their, you know, confidentiality around what they're doing as a, you know, with the students.
Okay. Do you know what they're studying?
It's my understanding that they're trying to study what the changes in mobility for older adults over time by having these kinds of interactions, physical therapy interactions with older adults.
Okay.
Yeah.
But out of that, whatever they're studying, it seems like they're going to provide professional input on how they should.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yeah.
Get exercises or?
Yes, so it's like a, it's going to be two things. An opportunity for our older adults to directly kind of connect with someone who is a physical therapist on their mobility needs and tracking that progress. And then it's also going to have things that they would do as a collective group together. So there would be, you know, an activity that is very specific to maybe, you know, range of motion, that sort of thing. And what they're trying to see is if this kind of like regular engagement, it does in fact improve mobility for participants.
All right, great. Thanks.
Yeah, and I can also, I'll make sure I get everyone like the official documentation from Pitt that kind of gives a little bit more detail, too.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Calkill?
Thank you. Welcome, Director.
Hi.
You know, when you were talking about the focal points, I did hear a northeast and west, but I didn't hear a south. Is there a southern?
Yes, your focal points, Beachview, Mount Washington, and South Side are together.
I want to tell you what a great job you do with the centers. You know, the people you have, their Will and G and M Beachview, I could go on and on, you know, they're all so, so really good, and they all have the right temperament and they, who's that? Is that right? Well, I'm not getting involved in that, but, so, so no, but I'm fully supportive of this, this program, of course. I think it's a good thing and we can get a little bit back into the coffers and help out, and whatever programming you decide to put that money into is great. But off subject, I had a gentleman here this morning from the district talking about the pools opening. And first of all, we never schedule a date to open earlier than what we, do we have a date?
We always, we always open the pools after Pittsburgh Public gets out of school because the vast majority of lifeguards are Pittsburgh Public students. And we also have 18 pools. And so, you know, staffing all of those pools is 180 to 200 people with the majority of them being in school until, I think their last day is the 16th. So we are, we are targeting the 17th as our open date for this year. And there will be a press release going out later on today to make that official.
Yeah, so as many as possible with the.
Yes.
Employees that you have.
Absolutely, yeah.
Do we have an estimated number of that? So we have 18 pools, is it going to be nine? Is it going to be 12? Do we want to just talk about that off record because it's unsure at this point?
It's okay. Yeah, there's a press release coming out today. I am comfortable saying that we have gotten to 15.
Got to 15? Oh, that's wonderful. That's wonderful. I'll ask you about which one's off record, okay?
Thank you.
But, no, that's great. That's great. I also want to compliment you on, you know, you getting involved with City Farms and the employees you put on and the work that they're doing. We're now almost halfway done with the orchard that you've been to. So, you know, they've been fantastic. So, and that's really fighting in food insecurity. It really goes back to that. So, so I want to thank you for all the work. I think you're doing a great job, and thanks for being here. I didn't mean to go off subject, but I just have to, you know, for my own curiosity.
Yeah, no, understood. And, yeah, we are really excited to open the pools. We do always do it that weekend after Pittsburgh Public and, you know, that's.
And he's right.
That allows us to get to the point where we can like train everyone, get everybody assigned, and get as many lifeguards trained before the end of the school year as possible.
Right, and Shelley does a great job for you in aquatics, you know, you really do. I know that you have some challenges there, but, but you're overcoming them slowly but surely, so thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1594.
Bill 1594, Resolution, Amending Resolution 227 of 2023, Authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation Office of Special Events to enter, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, into a professional services agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Three Rivers Marathon, Inc., to provide management services for the Richard S. Catagory City of Pittsburgh Great Race in order to correct an error within the legislation to allow for the payment of $135 for prior year sponsorships.
Motion to approve.